Thank you very much and welcome to the December 18th City Council Meeting. First thing we had was a record year for job growth. Leah, is that something you wanted to present? Scott's not here yet.
We were really excited earlier this month to celebrate what has been a record year for us. It was over 2,300 jobs that were announced. And that is not simply the jobs that came to us through football and kids. So that's a pretty exciting, incredible amount of dollars invested. And I think it speaks to the momentum that we see in the city of Fishers in all that there is. We're back on record.
Lot of jobs, David.
Okay. Next?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
No, it's, sorry for, had to step out there for a minute. It has been extraordinary here and I just want to compliment Brandon Dickinson and Megan Baumgartner and our entire team over in the Economic Development Group. We set an audacious goal of trying to land a thousand jobs committed to the City of Fishers 2017 and we ended the year around 2,200 new jobs in the community. And what was really interesting is to see the significant percentage of those that were homegrown, which means there's a lot of great companies here in the city doing great things. And we love to come alongside them and really support them in their endeavors. So I think as we look forward to 2018, we'll continue to push the envelope and hopefully try to hit the similar numbers and continue to build the momentum of economic development here in our city. I think it speaks to the long-term viability of our community. So it's a collective effort. Very few communities can honestly say that they've had their police department or their fire department and active economic development recruitment. And I'm proud to say that we've had both. And it's just extraordinary to see everybody pull together, try to recruit these jobs. So thanks for your recognition on it. And we look forward to an even busier 2018.
Good. Thank you very much. And as important as the new jobs, there are two jobs, two gentlemen have been with us for 25 years. So we wanted to welcome them and give them some applause tonight. So Chief Arusa?
That was applause for the two firemen, not Chief Arusa. I don't want him to get a big head.
Save your applause, save your applause. As the City of Fishers has grown the past generation, the Department of Fire and Emergency Services has also grown. And we're about to be one generation old. And you can imagine developing a fire department that was once volunteer and now becomes full-time since 1991 takes a lot of leadership, blood, sweat, and tears. Well, the gentlemen that we are here to honor tonight are no strangers to that effort. In fact, a lot of our success can be attributed to their efforts. Yes, I am a digital alien, but they're with me from the...
Tracy's coming.
Thank you, sir. Don't leave yet because this is supposed to be like going automatically and I don't know what to do.
No worries.
Okay. Lieutenant Greg Smith, 25 years of service. Lieutenant Greg Smith, Ann Battell, and Chief Derek Gable are being recognized tonight. They were both in the same recruit class in 1992. Greg and Derek, why don't you come on up there? They love this part. Ann, if your families want to come up, you can come up too.
He did have to say that.
I did it just for you. Come on, Ann. They both came on the job together in the same recruit class. Lieutenant Smith is on the trunk company here at Headquarters Station and he was promoted to lieutenant in 1995. He's been a diver specialist for 19 years. And if you know anything about being a public safety diver, it is a hard job. So anybody that can make it 19 years in that type of job, which requires strenuous activity underwater in a hostile environment, that's quite a feat. He's also a USAR technician. USAR stands for Urban Search and Rescue. So he does all the neat stuff that's really dangerous. Trench rescue, high angle rescue, confined space rescue, and collapse rescue. He's received the Unit Commendation and Meritorious Service Award. He is married to Ann Smith, our Finance and Admin Manager. And it is rumored that on occasion, sometimes he utters the words Chief Smith. And I think the gentleman can verify that in the back for me. Battalion Chief Derek Gable, he is the commander on sea shift. So he is responsible today for seven fire stations and 43 firefighters that deliver service to almost approximately 1,000 residents, 100,000 residents. This is the type of leadership that lets me sleep at night because I know that he's on duty and he's running the show. He was promoted to captain in 2002 and became appointed to battalion chief in 2012. He has received the Unit Commendation and two Meritorious Service Awards. He is married to Melanie. He has a son Blake, another son Jake, who is 17, and Brooke, who's seven. Please, a warm round of applause for these leaders. Lieutenant Smith asked for about 30 minutes of the microphone to do a speech, so I'll give that to him right now. Just teasing.
Next, we have an award that, I'm going to turn this over to Cecilia here in a second, but she has done a wonderful job putting together a committee for disability awareness. And they recently won an award. And Cecilia, would you just like to introduce the group and what you've been working on?
Sure. Thanks, David. As the Chairman of the Fishers Advisory Committee on Disability, it is a pleasure for me to have the opportunity to recognize the Fishers Advisory Committee on Disability for being awarded the Champions of Inclusion Award by the Governor's Council for People with Disabilities a few weeks ago. The Governor's Council for People with Disabilities honors the efforts of those individuals, organizations, and businesses that exemplify the council's vision that all Hoosiers are treated with respect and live in an accessible and inclusive community of their choosing. I'm proud of what we've accomplished together as a community in such a short time. And this is due in part because of the support of Mayor Scott Badness, Deputy Mayor Leah McGrath, and Fisher City staff whom understand that being an inclusive community for people of all abilities is an important part of being a smart, vibrant, and entrepreneurial city. We also have a large group of passionate citizens, educators, community leaders, organizations, and businesses whom have come together in the last year to work in partnership to begin creating a community of life without limits for people with intellectual and physical disabilities in Fishers. Some of the highlights from this year includes the Fishers Fire Department establishing a special needs registry to help first responders in emergency situations that a resident at a given address has visual, hearing, and mobility and other special needs. The committee has rebranded itself and is forming working committees to address areas related to employment, housing, and accessibility. The mayor's youth council is looking at accessibility in our parks and they're excited about working alongside the committee this coming year. The Fishers March Disability Month Committee did a fabulous job this past March to provide opportunities for the community to learn more about disabilities. And this coming March, the committee will again provide a number of opportunities to highlight the talents of those with intellectual and physical disabilities and to bring more awareness about inclusion, accessibility, and employment here in Fishers. Tonight, I would like to recognize the 2016, 2017 active members of the Fishers Advisory Committee on Disability. And I would like for them to come up as I say their names. Stacy Oldham, George Martin, Fishers Division Chief of EMS Steve Davidson, Wilbur Stutton, Tricia Dixon, Chrissy Pogue, Tom Bell, Patrick Schooly, Karen Russell, Julie King, Leslie Brown, Katie Myers, Don McCool, Barb Zelm, Bud Zendergraph, Jason Wagner, Michelle Steltz, Said Panamanemi, Sean Addison, Deputy Mayor Leah McGrath, and City Staff Ross Hillary, our ADA Coordinator, and Kelly LeWark, our Office Manager of Planning and Zoning. All of you were instrumental in laying the foundation as we moved forward this past year. I also want to recognize the new active members of the Fishers Advisory Committee on Disability for 2017, 2018. These individuals include Amy Corbin, Angela Lozer, Steve Lozer, Angela Tesel, Beth Meehan, Chrissy Pogue, Colin Clayton, Kent McCool, Tom Dickey, Dustin Ziegler, Kelly Hartman, Fishers firefighter Brandon Anderson, Janet Schwal, John Thomas, Carrie Thomas, Sarah Cox, Shelby Slowick, Marie Kennedy, Tiffany Hanson, and City Council members Eric Muller and Selena Stoller. I want to thank all of you for being actively involved in our community and for your support and efforts as champions of inclusion here in Fishers. Please give them all a round of applause.
Real quick, I wanted to just mention the people that were involved with this council's disabilities on the committee really were just champions for 2017. And I just want to let you know that this was an amazing opportunity this year. Has been a wonderful group of people. And I want to just really proclaim at this point in time that next year, this is going to become the most deaf-friendly city that we have. That is really our goal at this point. And not only deaf, deaf, blind, wheelchairs, anyone with any disabilities. We really look forward to a wonderful year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And next, we have Key to the City, Mr. Mayor. I think it's ...
I don't believe Linda is here tonight, but we do want to make note that at her retirement event a couple of weeks ago, I think it was Rich, we were able to provide Linda Carlino, the executive director of the sports organization, for, I think, 18 years, if I remember correctly. Key to the City, she's done an extraordinary job. So if you see her, wish her well as she enters into her retirement.
Great. Thank you. So moving on to the consent agenda, actually, the Finance Committee. Eric, did you have any updates versus the email that you sent out?
Not nothing in particular, just a few other questions. Seven and eight, we approve or we recommend for your consideration. And then we also had a nice conversation with our rep from Morgan Stanley about our investment portfolio. She comes in a couple times a year and just gives us guidance going forward, but also takes a nice review of what's occurred in the last calendar year or so.
Any questions? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion or any changes to that?
I can make the motion, I just can't pronounce it. I'll make the motion.
Motion by Pete, seconded by...
Second.
John, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one abstention. Moving on to Resolutions, R. 121817B, request to approve a resolution to the City Controller to de-appropriate city general funds. Ms. Bradford.
Lisa Bradford, City Controller. If I could, I will just discuss seven and eight together and then let you guys vote on them separately, but they go together a little bit. Seven is essentially to de-appropriate $7.5 million from the general fund budget. This is essentially a budgeting mechanism for 18. When the Division, Department of Local Government Finance goes to approve our 2018 budget, since we had appropriated it in 17, they'll look at it as not being available for 18. And so that's for the general fund of $7.5 million. And then the rainy day is 1.6 million. And it's the same concept for that. Any questions?
Yep. So any...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Okay. So number seven, we've got a motion by Pete, seconded by Selena. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve item...
Eight.
Eight.
Okay. Motion by Pete, seconded by Eric. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to number nine, R. 121817D, request to approve an economic development agreement. Megan, Ms. Baumgartner.
Hello. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, Assistant Director of Economic Development. Tonight, I am presenting for the City Council's approval, an economic development agreement for ThyssenKrupp Presta's relocation to Fishers. ThyssenKrupp Presta is a division of ThyssenKrupp, which is this business unit, I believe, is about 41.5 billion euros, rather, in revenue each year. This particular relocation is for a new technology and innovation center that they're going to be constructing at Exit Five in one of the, part of Comcast's former space, about approximately 37,000 square feet. We started talking with ThyssenKrupp a couple of months ago. And it was an exciting process to hear about all the innovation that they plan on doing and the synergies between our entrepreneurial spirit and the innovation that we try and have here in the city. In addition to that, it was exciting to hear about relocating 86 jobs to Fishers and a commitment to hire approximately 64 new employees. So a total of 150 new jobs to Fishers with great paying wages. As part of this relocation, they're going to invest about $7 million in this new facility between capital improvements and personal property. Because this technology center is going to be pretty extensive with personal property, the city is offering, and hopefully for your consideration, a five-year, 100% personal property tax abatement for any qualifying personal property purchases. They'll have to make those purchases within the first 24 months of moving in. And then also, we're offering them a $50,000 commercial grant. This is subject to them creating and bringing the 150 jobs to Fishers. For the abatement and for this commercial grant, the economic development agreement does lay out the different drawbacks for both of those. The abatement is pretty standard for what we see for personal property tax abatements. The commercial grant goes into a formula if, for whatever reason, only a portion of those jobs are created. And we feel very confident about working with ThyssenKrupp and their commitments as well. In addition to Fishers incentives, the state of Indiana is offering them about $950,000 in conditional tax credits through the Edge program and $200,000 in a matching grant fund for training. Tonight, we have Hector Camacho and Bob Clary from ThyssenKrupp Presta. If you guys would like to say a couple words.
Thank you, Megan, and thank you, Fishers. ThyssenKrupp is excited for this new opportunity to come to Fishers. And we look forward to many more years of a good relationship and hopefully future jobs. Thank you very much for your support in this case.
Exactly what he said. Thank you very much. The only one thing is they're engineering jobs. They're all engineers coming over. Thank you.
Are they Purdue graduates?
Most of them.
We did talk about that in the economics of all my agreement, but their attorneys wouldn't approve that. One final thing there, estimating that they'll move in in the beginning of May as well. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Pete. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion passes. Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Chris, you have the next one?
Good evening, Council. For the record, Chris Grisel, Attorney for the City of Fishers. I'm here tonight to present item number 10, a request to approve a First Amendment to the Park Impact Fee Agreement between the City of Fishers and the Miller-Kiotti Trust. If you recall, last month, we approved a park impact fee agreement for this land, 113th Street and Florida Road. To the north of 113th Street, Man Development has its exciting project that you approved in the rezoning effort last month. To the south, there's about 43 acres of property that are being dedicated to the City of Fishers in exchange for a park impact fee commitment by the city. And if, what we learned going through the process was, for whatever reason, our estimates were short by a couple acres last time we brought this forward to you. So the amendment tonight is simply to increase the acreage, which, again, will increase the park impact fee credit that the city is going to be giving out. So the credit approved last month was for $1,482,000. And tonight, we have increased that and asked that the credit be increased to approximately $1.59 million. And again, that's just a proportional increase with the additional acreage that wasn't originally accounted for. Steve Shea is also here tonight and would like to say a few words about the deal.
Thank you, Chris. For those that don't know me, I think most people do, but I'm Steve Shea. I've been a resident here in Fishers for over 25 years and a developer. I've been representing Ms. Ciotti and Herb Miller for the last, I think, two and a half years when I first met with Mr. Block on this with Mr. Miller. It's taken a long ways to get to where we are today. But I express the heartfelt feelings from both Mr. Miller and Ms. Ciotti, who's in Naples, Florida, and Mr. Miller, who lives in Carmel here, couldn't be here this evening, but to Mr. Brad DeReemer, Mr. Pete Peterson, Mr. John Weingart, Rich Block, and Ms. Goble, and the mayor, and Chris here this evening, Mr. Tony Begato. I can only say, all these, I don't see Steve Harden with us tonight, Tim Stevens, but to get to where we are today, to take 85 acres and the city to end up with a park and a roundabout at this dangerous intersection and end up with a very upscale community. And then I have to give one last shout out to my wife, who hears me come home quite frequently and said, "I can't believe what they did tonight." Tonight, I say to everybody, "Thank you," with a heartfelt "thank you," and wish everybody the happiest of holidays. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
With that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions? Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to number 11, R. 121817F, request to approve a declaratory resolution establishing an economic revitalization area. Easy to say.
For you.
Good evening. I just call them an ERA.
There we go.
They're simple enough. For the record, Brandon Dickinson, Director of Economic Development. What you have before you today is a declaratory resolution to create an economic revitalization area approximately and specifically at 10-300 Kincaid Avenue, or I'm sorry, Kincaid Drive. It's the former Bank One Building, former Roche Building. It has sat vacant for more than a year. And this would be the first step in putting together a tax abatement to make the site more easily developable and to get the vacancy taken care of. It is a high visibility spot, so we want to put the best foot forward to get good companies and good jobs in there as soon as possible. So the declaratory resolution would be step one. And then we'll be back next month with a confirmatory resolution, assuming that it passes tonight. Happy to answer any questions anyone might have about this.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Selena. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to number 12, now on ordinances, 121817, request to approve an amendment to the 2018 salary ordinance. CC.
Good evening. For the record, CC Conover, Human Resources Director. Before you this evening is a proposal to amend the 2018 salary ordinance. It is condensing the job titles, specifically in the Parks and Recreation Department. We've had lots of very specific job titles and decided that for convenience sake, it'd be better to condense them into fewer numbers.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
No public hearing, just got to suspend the rules.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and approve our first reading.
Okay. Motion by Pete, seconded by Eric. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Eric. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Thank you. Moving to number 13, 101617C, request to approve a rezone of 19.25 acres from R2 to a PUD. Mr. Hillary.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ross Taylor, Planner with the City of Fishers. Tonight, we have the second reading and hopefully the third reading as well of the Lake Meadows PUD. A little background, it's located north of Hoosier Road and east 126th Street, just south of I-69, across from Bel Airiki Park. It is currently zoned R2, tonight being asked for PUDR. A little bit of overview, it is approximately 19 acres. It will connect to the Whisper Woods subdivision directly to the east of that. It will be two parts, different type of residential assisted living facility, as well as two family dwelling units, similar to the Whisper Woods subdivision. And also have a large open space amenity in the middle, which will be utilized by both of those residents. Here is a site plan. As of right now, you'll see on the left is that assisted living facility closer to the interstate. And on the right is that retention pond wrapped with those residential units. Here is an architectural rendering from that retention pond, looking at the assisted living facility, as well as the east, south, and north and west elevations. This has, the elevations and architecture for the assisted living facility has been approved by the PUD Committee already. There was no issues at the public hearing meeting that we had last month. Currently, on the timeline, we're here at the second and third reading. Recommendations from us, we're very supportive of the project. The petitioner has been extremely helpful and cooperative and compliant to work with. Steve Harden is here to say a couple words, though.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the City Council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in the law firm of Fager, Baker, Daniels. And I'm pleased to be here representing Fishers-based business CNH Capital. And from CNH is Mr. Dan Hubbard, who's back here. Since first reading, we had the PUD Committee, as the staff report noted, we received a unanimous recommendation from the PUD Committee. We then had a neighbors' meeting at the Geist Christian Church, which is just right around the corner from this site. We had the HOA Board President and the pastor and his wife from the church that's next door to this property. They didn't have any questions or issues. And then Dan Hubbard went that same evening over to the HOA at Whispering Woods. They were having their annual board meeting. He presented to them there at that as well. And they were welcoming at that point. And then as Ross mentioned, we had a unanimous favorable recommendation without any remonstrance at the planning commission. So we're here tonight, hopefully, requesting and receiving a second and third reading. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you very much.
Any council questions?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Selena. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Selena. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Moving on to 101617D, request to approve a UDO official zoning map change for the Greenway overlays district.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Megan Shafer. I'm a planner with the City of Fishers. The item before you is for a new overlay district called the Greenway Overlay. So the subject area is identified here. So the subject area is identified here, so it's going to be south of the Geist Reservoir between Georgia and Cynthian. This is from our Fishers 2040 plan, so this identifies any greenway or green space that is existing or proposed in this area. And so what this greenway overlay is seeking to achieve is that any new development within this area would be required to provide pedestrian connections to these greenways or green spaces. So here is the location map of the parcels that are to be included on this overlay. This did go before Plan Commission earlier this month, and there was one parcel to the north that was removed. The property owner did not want to be included in the overlay, and staff agreed that it was not going to disrupt the pedestrian connectivity in the area. So we ask that you hold, suspend the rules, hold second and third reading, and approve the overlay ordinance, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion by Pete, seconded by John. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then, just a quick comment from Planning Commission. It was appreciated that staff went ahead and removed the one parcel. I think certainly being probably the closest councilperson to that area where it's at, I think the request from the landowner was adequate, and I think removing it was the right thing to do, so I appreciate staff action, being actionable right then and there and get that removed from there, because it really didn't add or detract from what we're trying to do. I think the Greenway project in and of itself is a terrific idea, and it's also being worked on with Fall Creek Township, okay, in conjunction, so we've got a couple governmental units. With that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve on second reading.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Rich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to number 15, 101617E, request to approve a rezone of text amendment. Ms. McGrath.
I don't know how to do this as well as you do. We'll just say, here you go. Hi, for the record, I'm Leah McGrath, Deputy Mayor for the City of Fishers. And we've been working on our Fishers 2040 now for a few years, and part of what we've really encouraged our staff to do and what we've tried to do is be proactive in changing that zoning to align with our 2040 vision. Through this process, we have identified three locations in the city that are in transition and a high priority for us, and these include the Kroger store at Allisonville and 116th Street. Kroger is going to be building a new store on the east side of Allisonville Road, as well as the two currently vacant Marsh buildings, one at Lantern Road and 96th Street, and one at 116th Street and Brook School Road. As we evaluated the current zoning, what we found is that they are broadly zoned C-3, which is a broad commercial zone, that didn't really fit the vision for that area. So what we're proposing tonight is to change the zoning so that the only permitted use in these locations would be grocery store. That doesn't mean that we think these will be grocery stores in perpetuity, but what that does, that we do believe that's an acceptable use, and doing that will give us time to work with property owners in the community to see what comes next, because what we want to come next, we don't know. We want to work with the community to understand what is going to be additive in this area as these sites transition and to maintain the vibrancy of the neighborhoods that are surrounding these locations. So we have had meetings with the property owners. We have received their objections to the zoning change, but we've also heard from residents, including from the neighborhoods Idlewood, Tanglewood, Gray Eagle, Lantern Pines, and Connor Creek, who are near these locations and very supportive of this proactive effort. So we would ask, it did go to Plan Commission, have a public hearing, and received a positive recommendation, and would ask for a second and third reading tonight. Happy to hear any questions you may have.
Any questions?
No questions. I mean, again, I think in terms of what went on at the Planning Commission, and Rich can certainly speak on his behalf, there was some discussion on what was going on. I think if we look at this from a policy standpoint, and what Fishers has done in the past and what it continues to do, is to use this in a way which is very positive for our community, right? We're not trying to stop any kind of development that will go there, we just want another bite at the apple. And I think we've showed the development community that we move rather rapidly when we find projects that we find suitable for the area and going forward. So from that standpoint, and I told the petitioner when they made their remarks at Planning Commission, that while I appreciated the fact that they were there and they want to make sure they move as rapidly as possible in any development, that I assured them that if they were to bring us a project, we would react just as rapidly as we have in the past. So from that standpoint, I am very supportive of this, but for me, it's just a continuing policy that we use in the past as it relates to land use and making sure we're creating our own destiny for the fit and finish we look at for our city.
Anything else?
I'll maybe piggyback Pete's comments, and I would add, because I was one who spoke against it, and I will again be voting against it, but I want to at least share what I think was a pretty healthy dialogue that we had at Planning Commission. And I would say that this case, to me, is one that, you know, I've thought a lot about and just really struggled with. I certainly understand and respect why neighbors, residents would have concerns, as I do, about what may happen with these buildings. I think the last thing anybody wants to see going there is it as an objectional use. I understand, on the other side, why the city feels strongly that we need to try and be protective where we can. The concern I have is, you know, basic and fundamental in a lot of respects as a property owner. And I think most people know, you know, I own commercial properties, but so do so many others, and when people invest in the properties, they take it subject to zoning. Our ordinance is such that it puts in place a number of uses that are allowed, and, you know, by no fault of the property owners, in so many cases with certainly Marsh, they're left now with a vacant building. You know, the concerns I have also relate to, it worries me when we, as government officials, try and, if you will, I'm not going to say preempt the market, but in some ways kind of control the market, and I just don't think that that is our place. I am, you know, certainly of the opinion that the market will generally sort things out, and I rely more on that. Now, that's not to say that there aren't places for control that we have in our positions. But I worry that, you know, this, I don't think it would be this, but would this be a precedent-setting item? I mean, you know, if there's a building that becomes vacant, do we then, as the city, step in and restrict what may happen? So it's because of those concerns, even though I fully understand, and I think this was expressed at the Planning Commission, why this was being recommended, I just can't get behind it for those basic reasons, so I am going to vote no again.
Other comments or questions?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and approve on second reading.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favors of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Todd, seconded by Pete. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
And one opposition. Thank you very much. Moving to number 16, 121817A, request to approve a text amendment to the Parkside PUD.
Good evening. For the record, Taylor Navarre, I'm with the Planning and Zoning Department here with the city. The item before you tonight is to hold, request to hold first reading for a proposed text amendment to the Parkside PUD. This can work here. There we go. Sorry about that. The Parkside PUD is roughly located east of State Road 37, north of east 126th Street. The proposed text amendment is specific to an approximately 10-acre lot off of Parkside Drive and is specific to an independent living facility that would be approximately 162 units of various size and forms there, as well as the parking for the lot and the building. The PUD is simply a replace and repeal, or repeal and replace, of a previously approved in, I believe, 2011, similar text amendment to the PUD for a previously specific, independent, senior living facility. So this is kind of to amend it to better fit this project in a couple different areas. One is the landscape buffer yard to the east that is adjacent to the residential neighborhoods over there. That is approximately 30-foot buffer area and is addressed in the PUD as, well as the architecture of the building. These are the proposed elevations that are incorporated in the amendment, as far as the building materials, height, and things of that nature. The project will go before the PUD Committee in January for their review and approval, and will go to the Plan Commission in February for the public hearing on the case. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The petitioner's representative is also here, if you have any questions for them, but staff recommends holding first reading tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Petitioner would like to make a presentation?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Council, Joe Calderon, Attorney with Offices at 11 South Meridian, Indianapolis. With me tonight is Mike Simcoe from Storypoint. Storypoint develops independent and assisted living facilities, mostly in the Midwest, Mid-South. They're based out of Michigan. This is their third Indiana project, first in Fishers. This site, as Taylor mentioned, is already planned as a PUD, passed in 2011 for a slightly different footprint. We're on 10 acres versus, I think, 16 that was approved in 2011. When we met with the lone counselor who was serving in 2011, we talked about the use because there had been quite a bit of discussion back then. Key to our presentation and our plan is to preserve that existing tree line on the east end, which we have done, so we're actually matching. Our parking ratios are a little different than the 2011. Our unit count is roughly similar, and we generally, the flavor in terms of building height, lot coverage, is going to be very similar to what's already approved in place. Just so the council knows, we will be having a neighbor meeting after PUD Committee and before Plan Commission. We want to get comments from PUD Committee before we do that. Mr. Simcoe and I are happy to answer any questions you may have. 162 is the max. The maximum height is, to top of roof, is 46 feet. I think the existing PUD was 45 feet, but I'm not sure if it was measured to the peak or midpoint of the gable.
Any other questions? Joe, are you still on your material mix, allowing vinyl?
We are proposing vinyl. We'll bring a sample. We have guaranteed a minimum thickness. We think it's going to be as good a quality as hardy plank might be. We'll certainly work and get the feedback of the committee in just a couple of weeks, and we'll bring samples of what we propose.
Okay. Can I say, because my feedback was something different than vinyl, so...
I would like hardy plank. I'd like to see hardy plank instead of vinyl.
We understand that that might be the preference of the council, and we'll certainly be having a discussion with my client about that.
Yeah, Joe, and I think that since David was the only council member who was on council at 2011, that's why I leaned over and kind of said to him, was I said, "Tell me a little bit about the project." So I think you're going to have to do some education with the other council members here, because there was only one who was here prior. I think you will have a very difficult time at Planning Commission with vinyl, so I think you need to talk to the client potentially about fit and finish and what can happen there, and maybe get some ideas of what way you can do that, or come in with a vinyl that's just going to wow somebody and that may be out there. I have no idea.
Understood.
I think, you know, because it happened in 2011, and David was the only one on council at that point, you know, the rest of us are kind of sitting here a little bit in the dark, so just FYI.
Absolutely.
I'll give it a first reading once you go to Plan Commission.
Absolutely.
Okay. It's first reading, go to Plan Commission. Okay, moving on to number 17, 121817C, request to approve a voluntary annexation. Mr. Hillary.
Good evening. You'll see the PowerPoint in a second. Tonight, we have the first and second reading of the Spiker-Hamilton Hill property annexation, as well as the public hearing. It is located north of 96th Street in the Hamilton Hills subdivision. It is located right there in that blue. It is currently zoned R. 5. They are looking, the property owners do not live in the city, they are looking to bring this into the city limits before potential selling of the property. Again, it's located in the Hamilton Hills Drive subdivision. It is approximately 2 acres, a little under that, I think it's a 1.96. It will be in Council District 5. Tonight, we hear the first, second, and the public hearing. Adoption of the fiscal plan will come back to you guys in January, and then the early effective date will be in February for that. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer. The petitioner is in California, but their law firm is locally here.
Okay. Any questions before we open up for public hearing? Okay, we'll open it up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Saying no, we will close the public hearing. And is there a motion for first and second reading?
Can you put that map back up there?
Sure.
This is west of the airport, and it's those beautiful homes just north of 96th Street. That's what I'm trying to figure out. So is this in your district?
Yeah.
Okay, so help me out there.
96th Street, just west of the airport, you know, Willoughby.
We're down in here, so we're off of, there's 96. So basically, you're right by where the new airport property is going to go, right?
Yeah.
So you're over on this side over here, and what's there now?
It's an older residential subdivision. They're all on 2 acres, because they're all on subject.
This is a vacant, this is currently a vacant lot.
And where's the 240 plant site?
What was that? I'm sorry.
What goes on with this area in the 240 plan?
They're state residential, aren't they?
Yes.
Yeah, they're all about.
A state residential.
Okay, so they're state residential, and that's currently where you're going to leave them? Well, I get that. Here's, again, so the nature of my question always comes back down to, if we go back in recent history, right, if somebody wants to do voluntary annexation for a piece of ground, and then all of a sudden we get a stub street going in there, that they want to put 18 houses on, right? So again, I don't know what the nature of this is. I certainly don't mind the voluntary annexation into the city, but I need to understand what's around it and what the current zoning is going to be when we voluntarily annex it into the city. And, yeah, so blow that up a little bit.
Sure.
Wherever you just work. I'm sorry.
Got to get down to it.
Sorry, my bad.
You're fine. So here's the Hamilton Hills subdivision right here around this circle, and this is the parcel in question.
Okay. So currently, the other parcels are not incorporated Fishers?
Correct.
Okay. So we're grabbing our contiguity off the neighboring parcel to the west, right?
Correct.
We need our contiguity requirements. And then the property to the north there, there you go, and that also is not incorporated?
Correct. That's also in the Hamilton Hills subdivision.
All right. So he's basically stranded in there in what would essentially be an estate property. So again, here comes my deal. So when we annex it, what's our... So again, here comes my deal. So when we annex it, what's our designation of the zone? Thank you.
Well, the zoning doesn't change when we annex. It's already zoned R5 today. So they can develop it unincorporated or incorporated as R5. Now, what we can do is we're amending the UDO, we're looking at the zones and where we want to change things to be consistent with the comp plan. The comp plan, R5 is one of our densest, other than the downtown, is probably our densest density. So we can look at changing the zoning to match the comp plan.
Right.
But that would, but again, the annexation doesn't prevent them from still subdividing under R5 today.
And that's where my whole point is, right, is that if they want to go ahead and bring this in and then you've got all these neighbors around there, they've got one single house on there, then they take it up this one driveway and they put five houses on a piece of property. And that's not what I want to bring in. So if we're going to do that, I'm happily annexing them into the city and welcome them in, but I want that to remain an estate property there or they're going to come up with some plan to where they're not going to put five houses in the middle of his district with everybody screaming at him the minute they come back in here with a plan. And then, you know, our fire department's going, well, how do I get to all five houses? You're putting a road up. You know, it just seems silly to me. There's a reason why this is happening and I believe it's development. And if it's development of five houses, I've got no interest in annexing it into the city. Just my opinion.
Why do they want to annex them?
They're trying to sell a lot and they believe it'll have more value if it's in part of the city limits.
Why they may annex them, will they be able to get some air supply or water in?
Yes.
And right now, the rest of them are in septic as well.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I was going to say where. You can't get through that house.
Yeah. It depends on where the utility easements are and everything else to come through that property. Yeah. So?
So I guess, Pete, what you're saying is maybe go back and have a conversation and say, "We will welcome you as a voluntary annexation if you will also marry that with the zoning."
Estate property designation.
Okay.
Because that's what's around. Now, if the rest of the neighbors want to get there and they all want to come in and they all want to say, "We want to develop and we want to be R2, R3, R4, R5," like with some sort of concept plan there, but I'm not going to pick a future battle with the rest of those homeowners that are there that are going to be screaming at us just because we annexed one property.
Well, I'll speak to what I think is a limiting factor here because I understand your concern. I really hadn't thought about it in that respect. But I think that our ordinance also requires a certain street frontage. And so this lot doesn't have that. I mean, it's got a stub street, but doesn't that, in effect, also limit what can be done with the number of lots? But I'll get back to what we were saying more specifically too, with everything else that's R2. It would seem like that's the right zone to have. Everybody else, I think.
To keep in mind here is they can go, technically under their current zoning today, can go build the same thing you're worried about them building under, if they were annexed into the city. I view these as two distinctly different conversations. You can annex them today if you want to, move forward with that process, and then you can rezone their property if you so choose in a separate process. If you say, "Well, we'll only annex you if you rezone," they could say no, but they're still entitled to go build what their current zoning allows now.
But like Rich said, it's probably a limiting factor where?
Well, but I mean, I think there's a separate pro, I mean, I think from a policy perspective, anyone who wants to step forward and become part of our annexed property is a good idea because of just the Swiss cheese effect we have. So I think the, probably the appropriate approach, and it's already been said in so many words tonight, is to be very clear and transparent with them is, yes, we will annex you if you want to continue forward, but understand we're going to rezone you regardless, so that those types of things don't occur. But I don't think it, I don't think it's a leverage point. I think it's just, if you want to continue forward on a voluntary annexation, great. Whether you come into the city or not, having now raised the concern of additional development, we will move forward with a rezone that's more continuous or complementary to the environment around it, whether you're in the city or not, because we're going to exercise our two-mile jurisdiction. So I feel like there, I don't think this is a negotiation so much as a, you guys have now clearly stated that this is not the intent from the zoning perspective. We can move forward on that procedure. They probably just need to go back and meet with the person and find out whether or not they still have an interest in being in our city.
Right. And again, I say this just from a historical perspective.
No, I think it's, I think it's a good question to bring up, but I?
Right. And I think you're right, Scott, but certainly Leon knows exactly the point I'm making. We go here and make the same point when anybody wants to voluntarily annex themselves in, right? What's the intent of the property, right, as we come forward? So I don't have, everything you said is absolutely succinct and correct. So I would be for the annexation, bringing them in, as long as we have that conversation with them, that it's going to be my intent to tell you guys to put it on a rezone.
So is it fair from a legal perspective that this annexation, this is not the finality of the annexation, but rather the first step in it?
Correct.
So you could potentially move this forward tonight, understanding that we'll go back and have a very candid conversation about rezoning. And if the petitioner decides to pull it, we can still move forward with the zoning, but at least they'll have the ability to pull it. Is that fair?
Rich has a good point. Does that make a lot, can they get available? There's no, what's the minimum road funding? You've got to have to get available.
Well, it's a, if it's not legal today, it's still non-conforming, but they would be allowed to, it's still buildable. They can build a home on it. They have to meet the setbacks.
You're probably only going to get one home because you're going to have to do it on well and septic because you can't get sewer from the west.
And there's also a stream that's faintly showing up now, maybe if you zoom in closer. There's also a stream in the property in some, so I mean, it's very limited.
Again, I think from a general policy perspective, we as a community want to bring as many of these Swiss cheeses into the community as we can, into the city. And then I think if we're just candid about the fact that we want to have a zoning that's more complementary and congruent with what else is out there, we can go back and have that kind of candid conversation. And then if there are engineering restrictions or realities, we can work through all that. But I think we just need to be above board, transparent about what the direction is you guys want to be going.
So we just give a first reading tonight and that's it?
Yeah, I agree.
So a first reading?
Okay, we'll move on to, so first reading on 17, moving on to 18, 121817F, request to approve an amendment to the nickel plate review committee. Tony, you're listed.
You're up, man.
That's really just update the makeup of it, I think, when I?
Correct. It's currently a nine-member committee and we've had trouble meeting a quorum, so we're just asking to modify the memberships down to five.
Their motion?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion by Pete, second, and by John. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Second. Motion by Pete, everybody. We'll give it to Eric. Second by Eric. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay.
Who are the ones going?
Yeah. Moving on to 19, 121817G, request to approve a text amendment to the MedTech PUD.
Good evening. For the record, I am Dale Davis. I'm a planner with the City of Fishers. The next item up for your consideration is a text amendment to our MedPark, our MedTech PUD. This is a pretty small text amendment. What has happened is Central Indiana Orthopedic was originally going to be located on a smaller, one of the smallest of the four parcels at this park. And now they have partnered with a larger company and they're moving to this back lot. Now, as part of the partnership, they're going to build two individual buildings that are going to share a common atrium and this will allow them to share all sorts of medical equipment. And that will save them both lots of money and there's lots of operating efficiencies. So with this, we want to bring a text amendment forward to allow for a building to span the property line so that the setbacks are measured from the outer perimeter of the joint lots. In a separate process, we will be going through Plan Commission to do a primary plat amendment and a secondary plat amendment to properly split these lots. We wanted to go through it as a text amendment because given that these lots are all actually pretty big, we could see this happening again. So we wanted to bring it forward as a text amendment so we don't have to go for multiple variances or anything of that nature. Bill Butts, our project engineer, is here tonight if you have any questions and I'm also happy to answer any questions.
Can I ask a question related to this? I mean, it's back to Pete's point about what we can do to help expedite things. This seems relatively minor and there are a lot more details that are going to be worked through. Could we have first, second, and third reading on this tonight and allow four there to be? Or is it just because it's advertised that it's?
No, we can't because it has to go through the typical planning and zoning process. You're going to have to have a public hearing on this. What we can do looking forward, and as we've amended and brought before you a month or so ago, was the expedited process where items like this, a first reading, will start going and being initiated at the Plan Commission for the public hearing and then brought back to the council afterwards.
And we will be bringing this back to City Council next month. We'll be going on the quicker timeline to keep these guys moving forward.
What would they like to start, start?
Bill?
Probably later this year, middle, later this year.
Yeah, you got two weeks.
You're starting after Christmas?
No, no.
For the record, Bill Butts, Kimley Horn, 250 East 96th Street, just moved. The plan, as I understand it, is to start this 2018 construction season. So I think we'll see construction plans filed first of the year and then obviously we'll make it through our processes and get our checks and balances taken care of. And then my understanding is they want to start pushing dirt as soon as possible.
And mayor, the roundabout will be done maybe?
I'm framing construction season of this summer and hopefully done by this fall. They'll be simultaneous, so that should be fun. Motion, we've had first reading.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. I guess that's it for the agenda. I just wanted to thank everybody for their confidence and their support this year. I've had fun trying to help the meetings go along and as has been our fashion the last two years, I'll be rolling off and Todd, you'll be jumping into this chair, so I'll support you on all the meetings. And I just wanted to thank everybody. And was there anything else on the agenda?
Just one quick item. I got word tonight, I think, 126th and Hoosier Road will, the light will be functional Wednesday, I believe. So that'll be done for a number of council members who were very concerned about that one. They were able to get that done in a quick time, so should be functional Wednesday.
Great.
Yeah. Uh, yes. They won't be striped until next spring though, but the functionality will be there.
Anything else on the agenda, Scott?
Nope, that's it.
Actually, there is. Sorry for the rest of the staff. We appreciate all your time, but everybody here at this table, we wanted to thank you. And wish you a Merry Christmas. Oh, me? It's like Santa. Very nice.
This is from all of us.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you, guys. Very much. Diet Coke? Thank you, guys. We much appreciated.
Yeah, you got to open it. You got to open it.
All right, all right. Oh, there we, oh, that, nice! Diet Coke socks. That's awesome. Well done. Well done. I like it. That's awesome. I'm very excited about that. Thank you. You nailed it. Motion adjourned, second. That's funny. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.